Good evening. Today is Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, in room 229 at the Veterans Memorial Building. This is the meeting of the planning board. Could we please all rise and say the pledge of allegiance?
Yep, no problem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, the first thing on our agenda tonight is an approval for Riven Dale Woods' definitive subdivision plan endorsement. The planning board at the last meeting, did we approve that at the last meeting?
It's already been approved.
Yeah, so it's already been approved, right. So the appeal period's over and we signed that tonight, so that's all set to go. So I think Mr. Silver wanted to come up and say a few words.
I just wanted to thank everyone on the board for working with me over the many months of this project and thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing in the agenda, we're actually going to skip over one. We're going to go for a waiver of site plan approval request for Ed Williamson, 969 Main Street, addition of a teahouse cafe to current Pathways Wellness Center business. And to present for that is Mr. Williamson. You get it?
Sit here?
Yep, go up and talk into the mic if you could.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Okay.
And I am Ed Williamson. I own Pathways, which is across the street. It's right next to the library. And so it's a wellness center that I have, and there's also a studio next to it or a part of it. So that studio not really being used all that much. It was going to have classes and stuff, but the only thing that I was doing was teaching Tai Chi in there. And so I'm actually, like you said, I'm renting the Niagara building right now to do that. So looking to turn that space into a teahouse and cafe. And all the work that's going to be done will be inside. There's actually not much to do as build out inside. Removing one interior door and then most of everything else that's going to be done is building cabinetry and stuff for the service areas and obviously bringing tables and chairs for the restaurant, part of it. So that's what I'm looking to do over in that space.
So, one question I'd ask on that is, well, two questions. Number one, parking. So when you talk about a change in use, I assume you may have more people there. What's the parking situation over there?
So we have the parking space right behind where the library is and the police station right behind here. That's where everyone parks for Pathways anyway.
Okay.
And actually, you know, because of the studio, there was going to be a lot of people going in and out of the studio originally. Because of the capacity of the teahouse is about 40, if it was full and then all the staff were there, it'd be about 40. So actually it wouldn't be even more than what we had originally needed for parking spaces.
And then the second question is signage. So on that, obviously any sign would have to meet the regulations, but what are you, are you going to change the sign, new sign, different sign?
Sure. There's a sign up there now. There's an awning and then there's a sign that has pathways on it. And that would change, that sign would just change out to say the teahouse and cafe instead. So we're not adding more signage, we're just changing out what's there to something new.
Ed Williamson, the board, have any?
Just a quick question. What type of food are you going to serve?
So it's a fully plant-based diet food. Rice, vegetables, some sandwiches, salads, things like that. And then the teas are going to be teas from around the world. They're loose-leaf teas. Everything will be nutty bags.
Might as well promote it while you're going to?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe somebody's listening.
So yeah, they won't be, we don't have any cooking onsite. Everything that would be cooked would come from a cafe that's in Westwood. It's a pre-approved restaurant. So anything that we prep, you know, prepare sandwiches and salads onsite and everything, but everything's plant-based. So we're not actually cooking anything. We don't have any stoves or any of that in the facility.
All right, so it sounds like there's really no specific change on the building or the signage, just a swap. So I don't have any, anyone else have any questions? Anyone in the audience? All right, make a motion that we waive site plan approval for 969 Main Street. All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So when will you be starting to teach Tai Chi across the street?
I already did.
Oh, you did?
Obviously, I've been teaching Tai Chi for years, but?
Oh.
Yes. Beginner classes Monday evening, 6 to 7.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right, so we're going to, next we'll jump back to the Regency at Glen Allen Toll Brothers bond discussion. We got a Toll Brothers asked to have their bond reduced. So, I actually, I'll go ahead and read it, why not? So, per the attached bond estimate, Toll Brothers respectfully requests a reduction of a charity bond from the original amount of $1,744,100 to the amount of $811,731,000. And this amount has been reviewed by Beta and approved for that amount. So I make a motion that we accept the reduction in the bond to the amount of $811,730,000.
I'll second that.
All right, great. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Chairman, just so everyone knows, this is only for work that's being done inside.
Correct.
That we have a separate bond for work that's being done on the outside. So nobody needs to get nervous about that.
All right.
And then I have a second request, to set the bond for the Phase 2D.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Second one is to set a bond amount for Phase 2D. So they're into a new phase in there.
Okay, but they didn't give us an amount for that?
Beta did. Beta came up with the estimate.
Oh, okay.
$755,500.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
We can approve the bond for Beta's estimate.
Yeah, okay. Oh, it's in behind. Sorry. That's why I couldn't find it. All right, hold on. There we go. All right, so our engineers for the planning board put a bond estimate together for the amount of $455,700 for the Phase 2D. So I make a motion that we approve that amount as the bond estimate for Toll Brothers.
Okay.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
The $755,000, yes, an informal discussion, and the gentleman is here.
That's fine with me. We'll roll right into that. So, all right, the next item on the agenda is an informal discussion with Michael Latulip.
Latulip, yeah, like the flower.
Okay, there we go, thank you. Sorry about butchering your name. And it would be a request to talk about a cannabis manufacturing facility in a portion of 1375, the Collet Manufacturing Building.
Yes, exactly. So I'm here representing AdVasa tonight. We are a state-certified economic empowerment applicant. We're one of the 123 applicants that got through that process. We also currently are a manufacturer that operates with a license out of California. In fact, one of the reasons that we were certified as economic empowerment applicants here is because of all the work that we've done already in cities like Oakland where they were the first to really launch these social equity programs. So they passed a part of the state law here that said that if you had experience in or business practices in promoting economic empowerment in communities disproportionately harmed, that you would get priority licensure. So we were one of the few groups back in April of 2018 to be certified. We do also operate in Florida, but we operate with a partner there. But here, we're kind of looking to do something independent, totally independent, just a small portion of the Colt manufacturing facility essentially. There's an office in the front portion of the space that is not currently being used. And Lisa, who's now the landlord-owner there, is essentially willing to work with us, you know, if we were to get approval, you know, so she would lease us the space to use for our manufacturing facility. We are a award-winning solventless manufacturer, so that means we don't use any chemical products at all. It's probably going to be quite small in terms of, you know, comparing if we were to actually use solvents. They have much larger laboratories. We're a small business. We're really looking to do a small manufacturing facility and completely chemical-free. So there won't be any danger to the public that way. I'm here to kind of ask a few questions before we get started because we are a small business and we don't want to kind of get into things where we're spending a lot of money before we kind of know what's happening. So there was a correction to this. I don't know if you guys see the letter in front of you, but number five, I put 1,500-foot restriction and I realize it's actually 500 feet. So I apologize for that. But essentially, Camille Wright has been tremendously helpful. She's already kind of told me that it does appear to be in the IP2 district. I did speak with the building inspector about it as well, and he seems to be in agreement that that's the case. She also told me who the contact person was for the host community agreement. I'm not quite sure how it's done here, but do we get our special permit first or do we get our host community agreement before we get our special permit? Because some cities, they do it differently. Cambridge has you get your special permit and then get your HCA. Some other cities like Amesbury, I believe it was, gave HCAs prior to the special permit. So do you guys know what the process has been here so far? Have, when people come to you, do they pretty much already have their HCAs? Or do I have to kind of get permitted first?
Luckily, we had the person who wrote the bylaw, who's a member of this board, so I'm sure she can answer you.
You would go to the board of selectmen first?
Okay.
And you will begin, you will do your host agreement with them?
Okay.
So that would be in place before you submit your application.
Thank you for that. I wish a lot of cities did that. Unfortunately, a lot of cities have become kind of a battleground of special permits and then the city determining who gets HCAs and who doesn't. So I really do thank you for designing that in a very equitable fashion, coming from the social equity industry. We really appreciate that.
I wish I could say that that's why we did it. It's actually easier for us
Yeah.
to know that it's already gone through that portion with the town and been accepted to that point before we started.
Yeah, that way we don't waste anyone's time. I totally agree with that. So.
You'll tell people from now on that that's why we did it.
Yeah, I know, you guys could tout that because, believe it or not, there's a lot of cities that are claiming they have equity programs. And in reality, when you boil it down, you see that it's really just a fight over who gets the space and who knows people. So very happy to see you guys have actually done it in real life, not just in name only. So that's great. And how long did it take? I see there's about, there's two permitted facilities already here. How long did it take? Was it like nine months? Was it?
Yeah, so on this one, it said on this 1073, the application was filed 8/16/19. It was voted on 11/12/19. So that would be three months.
Okay, great. That really is helpful.
But that's the process here, in front of this board.
Yeah, in front of this.
Which is just for the special permit.
Yeah.
That doesn't include all of the negotiations with the board of selectmen.
Right. And there was another one, the recreational, 1525 recreational facility. That was filed 1/30/19, and that was voted on 3/12/19. So that was, you know.
But that was also, that had been pre-approved for a medical license, and the applicant was grandfathered in, so they're.
It was by right.
Right. We couldn't deny them. So, and they already had, they had a special permit in hand. And so it was a much different process because we already had gone through it with the medical.
Yeah, no, Comcan, I'm familiar with them. Actually, I am, I was one of, the reason I got certified is because of all the work I've done in the medical program. So I kind of helped establish a lot. I've been working with the group that passed the ballot question since about 2015. And believe me, I'm happy to hear that you guys are saying by right because some cities have questioned that. And, you know, it's pretty clear, the law to me anyway, that the medical facilities were supposed to be able to add adult use because we didn't want to see the medical program go away like it has in other states where the adult use essentially opens without medical and then the medical facilities slowly close up around it. So we didn't want to see that here. I think that's why they put it in the law. So good to see that there. And then our manufacturing process, since we use a solventless technique, it's very specific, we often need to use a refrigerated truck or something to transport it from the facility to another facility. So I noticed a 500-foot restriction, but I'm wondering if we were to co-locate like a third-party transporter. So it wasn't like a separate business, but it's essentially a separate license from the commission in order for us to transport our own product to, you know, to distribute it. Would that be a problem with that 500-foot buffer? If we co-locate same business, could we potentially add another license there and not run into that 500-foot buffer?
Well, I'll tell you this, that historically, this board does not give answers like that in a general sense. We would have to, there would have to be an application that we looked at and looked at all the specifics. For the purpose that we don't want to say, yes, you can, and then have the specifics come to us six months down the road in the form of an application and go, well, this doesn't, this doesn't, this doesn't fit. And the applicant say, well, wait a minute, when I was here for an informal hearing, you said yes. So we don't really, we won't give yes or no, yes, you can, no, you can't, until there's an application in front of us.
Okay, that makes sense.
That would really be something you'd need to have an attorney look through all of the bylaws on your behalf and present it in such an inappropriate manner.
And then also on number five, you also had the location there. So when we looked in the zoning bylaw, one of the things that was actually in our bylaw, it said, what?
Without an application.
I know, but I can read, this is public record. So I could read the public record. I'm going to read the statement out of the thing. And so in here, in the, in our zoning bylaw, number four, it says marijuana establishments shall be located in standalone facilities and shall not be allowed within a building or structure containing other retail, commercial, residential, industrial, other uses except for co-location with another licensed marijuana establishment or marijuana treatment center. So I would look at that, I would look at that piece of the bylaw. And, you know, since you're doing an information thing and giving you some information, we can hand you this and you can take a look at it, but I would look into that.
All right, and understanding, like she said, that it's an individual basis on application. So it's, while this is great, it's still going to be taken on a case-by-case basis. So I appreciate that.
Right.
Great. Well, I'm really appreciative of you guys taking the time out with me tonight. You know, we are an economic empowerment applicant, which you guys probably haven't seen a lot of us yet. A lot of us are still very, having a hard time getting funding and all sorts of things. We're actually one of the few groups that are capable of doing this because we already have operations in other states. So, you know, very happy to be here. And I think the next step for us will be going to the selectmen and kind of proceeding forward with an HCA. So I want to thank you guys, all right? And that'll be all, I think, for me. You guys have any questions for me about anything? All right?
Is this the only site you looked at in Millis?
Yeah, it is. A friend of mine knew Lisa, so that was kind of how the connection was made. Yeah.
It was another interested party.
Oh, really? Well, I knew there was, well, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of interested parties right now, you know, in regards to this industry. So for sure. But we're EE, so we're unique, I think. We'll bring some uniqueness to that. You'll be able to say you have an EE license, which would be great. So I think every city should be touting that if they have that. So anyway, thank you guys. And like I say, this is an equitable system here. So I will be touting your work in other cities around the state. Okay? So thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we have, we'll actually talk about construction work hours. So earlier, a couple of weeks or so ago, one of the board members saw that there was a contractor working earlier hours than they were supposed to. The building commissioner actually went down and wrote them a fine. The reason I bring this up is, number one, I'd like to thank the building commissioner for doing that. You know, we're, as a board, you know, we do want to be respectful of the neighbors. And knowing that we have some upcoming, you know, possible large developments, you know, I think it's important that the contractors work to the rules. And it's not us being, you know, difficult. It's when they drop a machine off at 4:30 in the morning and unload it and wake up all the neighbors in the neighborhood, that's not really fair to the neighbors. So one of the things also, this happened to be something where one of the members happened to be driving by and knew the right person to call. One of the thoughts I had was going in the future, possibly maybe we talk to the police department and have them log it. So they don't have to do anything. If one of the residents, you know, sees a truck dropping an excavating machine off at 4:30 in the morning, and I say that because I've seen that happen in a development that's right down the street from where I live, because I'm up at 4:30 in the morning, you know, they could call the police, they could log it, and then the building commissioner could go down and say, hey, guys, you're really not supposed to be dropping machines off at 4:30. Or like the discussion we had one time when there was a lady in who was up on another development that had been built off of Acorn Street, and she was up enjoying her new house and her deck at nine o'clock at night with a glass of wine, and there was a bunch of fellows up on the roof with headlamps on roofing the house next door. So in my mind, that I don't think is very fair to the people in the town. And I'd like to, you know, I think we should develop a way that is fair to the contractor, but makes it clear that, you know, we mean business. So if you work later than you're supposed to, you know, and this isn't, I'm not necessarily thinking of, you know, the guy who's doing his roof at his house. This is more of, you know, people who should know better in larger developments. And, you know, I'd like to see if we could think about a way to equitably enforce these. So, and if anyone else had any thoughts, but.
I think you said it. I agree with everything you stated. And we have a bylaw, and people need to be enforced. And that's a good way to, the police can log it.
Right.
It's an easier call than, the building commissioner could be out hunting somewhere and then not be able to get there.
Yeah. And then that way, you know, I'm not, we're not putting the police department in an awkward situation. They'd go by and they'd say, yes, there was a truck there. It was unloading a thing. And he'd report it to the building commissioner, and the building commissioner could go up and say, you know, hey, listen, guys. And he could deal with it in his own way. And plus, it would be someone who would be impartial, because that's the other thing, is that, you know, you want to make sure that it's not, you know, somebody who was not happy about a house being built in their backyard calling up every 15 minutes. You know, this would, I think that would be an equitable way to go about it. So I think I'll try to reach out to the chief and, you know, I think that makes sense. And like I said, I do want to thank the building commissioner for, you know, stepping in and, you know, we want to make sure that people follow the rules.
Absolutely. Because those rules are not just, it's not just a bylaw. They are in each one of the, they're in conditions for each special permit.
Right, right.
And unlike the guy that's putting on a new roof in his house, these builders are, they know, well, they know better. They have the document in front of them.
Right.
They have it. And it's their responsibility to relay those terms to the contractors.
The signs posted right out there while the guy's banging the hammer.
No, I mean, you know, there's onesies, you know, because I, you know, I've done it where, you know, all of a sudden I look and I drive to my job site on a Monday morning and there's a big giant machine there. And I'm like, so when did you guys move the machine? Oh, Sunday morning. You know, so, you know, we're not supposed to do that. You know, that's a onesie. But if we get, you know, a contractor who is regularly, you know, starting early, working late, you know, I don't think that's, that's just not fair to the people who are butters. So.
How do we regulate fines?
That's the building commissioner. We can't do that.
I think the idea of having, notifying people, you know, getting the word out there to call the police, as you said, that gives that, that second witness. So that if, if the tables are turned and it's an individual that's just, they're going to complain about everything if it's, if the deadline is 6 o'clock and it's 6:05.
Right.
And the noise that you're hearing is actually them coming off the roof and loading up their trucks to leave, but the work has been completed. You have, you know, a police officer comes by and goes, yeah, it was 6:05, but they weren't working. They were putting their tools in the back of the truck, type of thing. So there is that impartial.
Right.
They can log it and log it as such. So that way the building inspector knows, you know, again, if he's out hunting. I mean, if it just happens to be that it's a weekend and he's, you know, he doesn't live in Millis, so, you know, I think that if the chief is on board with that, that would be great.
Okay.
My opinion.
All right, next thing would be a housing production plan implementation update from Ms. Riley.
So today, you guys missed it. We, Bob Weiss and I, attended this month's Southwest Advisory Planning Meeting, in which the topic was inclusionary zoning discussion. When we talked about the implementing the housing production plan, we had discussed, started just taking one item at a time and possibly starting with the pre-existing non-conforming lots and looking into seeing what, what could be done with those lots, what options. I have reached out to a couple of individuals at MAPC, haven't gotten much information yet. One of the difficulties is going to be because it's not, you're not going to be zoning an area. You're going to be creating things that would, to have somebody creating some rules for someone to apply to a particular lot, you know, see if it can be random. However, in today's meeting with regards to inclusionary zoning, which has to do with when developers coming in, having a percentage of their housing be affordable housing, Millis is, that's one of the items on our production plan, and we are very far behind as far as establishing some zoning regulations for this. And I think with a lot of towns, we hear affordable housing and everybody panics. But one of the things that there, that I really was not fully aware of is that when it comes with special, with private developments, especially of single-family homes, it's not necessarily, it's looking at more moderate incomes. And we would have the ability to set a minimum that if a builder comes in and say, is going to build 10 units or more, then we would ask for 10% of those to constitute moderate housing. Because when you get to lower-income housing, vast majority of those people aren't going to have a down payment to be buying a home anyways. So it looks to bring in some moderate housing, and there are a lot of tools that we could use. For example, if a developer is coming in to build a $700,000 home and they're putting up 10, 12 units, you're not going to ask them to build a $350,000 home there. Because the reality is, that one person that's living in the neighborhood of amongst 700,000 units, there's the question of, well, do I want to be that one person? So there are tools where you can say, okay, we could, whether the builder, if the builder has locations, has other property, if the town is able to start buying other properties. That's actually what Norfolk has done. They started out with some CPC money, bought one house, did a little bit of renovation, was able to sell it as a moderate-income property, take those proceeds. And they've now, in the last five years. And they've now, in the last five years, they've done seven homes. Unfortunately, we don't have a planner in Millis, which is the one thing, I mean, Sherwin has half of our population. They have like 4,300 people, and they have a full-time economic and planning person. So that is going to be dumping stuff on this board, which normally a planner would do and then present to this board and work together. So I have contacted the person that, Alexis Smith, who is the Senior Regional Housing and Land Use Planner, that did this presentation, and asked her to send me some templates and just some example bylaws that we can start. And I've started pulling bylaws from Sherwin, from Norfolk. But that's really, from what I learned today, we are pretty far behind the ball as far as most communities. And so I would suggest that that be what we start working on, because there's, we have, Jim, do you know what percentage we're at right now?
We're, um, right around 3%.
We're supposed to be at 10.
3.3. Even with this, I believe as, as we build more homes, your, that number goes down. So if we were at 3.3, that was like maybe five years ago.
Yeah.
So with all these, the new developments, that probably numbers even lower.
Yeah, the percentage is going down. And the other problem with that is that in the past, a lot of those affordable housing units are, the deed restrictions are for either 20 to 30 years. So there are some units where those deed restrictions are going to start to run out, and again, our numbers are going to drop even lower. And so that's one thing, one of the tools you try to implement is to work with a builder to have that property be deeded in perpetuity. Now, when you have that in their single, in their units that are sold as a part, as opposed to rental units, what comes into play is the lottery system. If there, if it is deeded, how, who's going to enforce the current owner to sell it to someone who also qualifies? And how does that unit owner know the whole process? There's a lottery involved, there's, it's a huge, huge process. So the Economic Development Committee will be discussing that next, on the 19th, I think is our next meeting. But this is something that, I think over the next six months or so, I'm sorry, we might back to you.
No, it's first.
Um, we are going to have to start really putting some energy into.
Okay. I picked the easy thing and you picked a hard thing, so it doesn't sound like a lot of fun.
Well, it's, it's not so much that the other, I mean, this is going to be much more complex, but this is something that we may start having problems if we continue to ignore it.
The, the other thing that they had on there is they, they, in the, in, overall, like in the state, and they were actually talking about changing, the governor's talked about changing some of the zoning statewide, making changes to like multifamily by right and changing the voting requirements instead of having to have the, the major, just a simple majority now, that's statewide. They've actually talked about this for housing, to try to increase the housing, moderate housing levels. So it is, it's being talked about statewide and across the country, so.
That was actually another thing that they, they're looking at the open, open space because that is what, you know, the state is looking to push more of, because of the density, because the state looks at it as if you're approving open space subdivisions, then you're having smaller, you're having smaller lot sizes, which would then in turn presumably be smaller homes. Or, and they, they're looking at it in two different ways. One is saying, okay, if you have this lot of 10 acres, especially if it's an area where sewer is not going to be available. This was discussed with Sherwin that has no town water or town sewer. So for them, it's, their water is really, that's a huge issue for them. So if, you know, because we know developers want to get the biggest bang for their buck, so they, they have a specific lot size, they're building the largest home they can. But if they're only allowed based upon the available water indoor sewer, there's now a formula that's used to determine safely, how many bedrooms could you put on this 10 acres? So let's say, the formula works out that you could put in 40, 40 bedrooms on these 10 acres. Is it going to be better to build five-bedroom homes and you've only, and the builder can only sell eight units, trying to sell 700,000? Or if he's selling three-bedroom homes, he has a lot more houses now available that he can sell to make up, to try to encourage, because of the cost of land, you know, builders just, builders aren't making enough of a profit to build to even three-bedroom homes nowadays. But because of that, they're actually, one of the things they're trying to convince towns to do is have the open space bylaws, consider it as a by right, whereas a standard subdivision would still have to come for a special permit. Now, my gut reaction in hearing that is, most planning boards in most towns are going to initially, then that's, that's not very palatable to just say it's by right, because then you're taking a lot of that control in the review process away from the town. But that is one of the things the state's looking at and trying, you know, I mean, that would be several years down the road, but it is something like the MAPC. And of course, they deal more with Boston. You know, they were having this whole discussion with regards to industry, and there was one that planner from Bellingham was on this committee that otherwise everybody else is from Boston, and they're like, what do you mean, you have all this industrial? We didn't think anything was out, out there. And they, you know, it's crazy, some of these people in Boston still, they think that we might as well be in, you know, if this is 1812 and the, you know, horse and buggy's still not getting out of here.
Have never made it here.
Yeah. So they are, you know, sometimes I look at some of the things that come through with the, the MAPC, the recommendations, and I just think, you know, I don't know how they, it blows my mind, some of the things that they are, they want, want towns to advocate for, and it's just, I don't see it as realistic, but that's my personal opinion. But those are, those are, are, again, are tools that could be used, like for example, looking at how to encourage builders to build smaller homes that would then be more, would fall into the moderate housing area. Because that's, with all of this, you know, the 40Bs and the rental units, and they're finding that they are, they have missed that moderate housing market that need, because there are, there are, the 80% ratio, you get a school teacher that, you know, isn't, doesn't have 25 years under their belt, that's, you know, the first couple of years as a school teacher, as a young firefighter, police officer, people that have jobs that are, you know, say, and they're spending a ton of money on rent because they don't have that deposit yet. They could actually probably afford a mortgage if they could find a decent sized house. So that's the, now the niche that they're realizing. All of these low-income, lower-income housing, they don't think you use the phrase low-income. It's, now they're calling it workforce, um, market, the workforce housing. So I will, when I spoke with Alexis, I had told her I'd email her and she would get some stuff to me in the next couple of days, so I will forward all of that to you, to read once she sends it.
Really great.
We can start from there.
Thank you.
This is Sharon.
It's 4:11, Union Street. We actually lives up in Millis Housing, so there's not a lot of housing, affordable housing in town, and we have a huge list up there, wait, waiting list for people to get in and, and stuff. So there's not a lot of housing, and, and, and as people want to, can't afford to stay in their home or in a regular apartment, they're looking, they want to stay in Millis. So it's good to see that the board's on the step of heading in the right direction. It'd probably be a long process, but I think we'll get there. You've got the right person to do it, you know, you did a great job, as we heard tonight, with the marijuana. So, yeah, it's important, people want to stay in town, and hopefully we can get more for them. We do have projects coming, and, but they're a ways away, so hopefully we'll get more as time goes on. Hopefully we'll get to 10%, that's a big number, but hopefully we can get there. Thank you.
All right, the next thing we have is the approval of the minutes from January 14th, 2020. And I read them and they were absolutely wonderful as usual. And so I make a motion that we approve the minutes from January 14th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Could we set in April, please?
Yep.
Simon, what do you think?
Camille, can you just give us a recap? I know I asked at the beginning of the meeting, what's coming, when are the two projects coming?
I'm expecting.
Sorry.
That's all right, no. I'm expecting a definitive plan application for Ridge Street's open space subdivision. I've heard that that could be filed as early as next week. If that is the case, that will be scheduled for the March 10th meeting. But like I say, I'm expecting, it hasn't been filed yet, but when it is filed and scheduled a butters within 300 feet will be notified, the public hearing will be advertised, and that will start on March 10th. And I haven't set a time yet.
And then what other anticipation on, on the Main Street one?
Uh, Main Street?
Well, the Cottage Ave.
Uh, the Woodlands project? No, I have not, I, I don't know when that's coming, that has not been received yet. I understand the Ridge Street subdivision will be first, and I expect that next week.
Thanks.
Oh, Jim, so one other question on the, just because the, when is the earliest they can pave Fortune Street?
Fortune Street, uh, April.
April, okay.
If the weather continues this way, I mean, it'll, it'll be March, but, believe me, they want to pay it quicker than, it's just, you know, the plants aren't open to just, for that, to have truck after truck after truck. None of the plants are opening up.
Right.
So once they open the plants up, believe me, they, and there's still a, there's a leak in, in the three-inch sewer main that we have to locate. They, they have a good idea where it is. I mean, they've done sections of it, so they're going to have to rip it up. Soon.
Soon.
I, I'll be the happiest person in Millis when they finally get it done.
Jim, have we, you heard anything further about Dover residents?
Yes, actually, they're, they're finalizing their, last night they went to the select board, they got the, the sign that we approved.
Oh, yeah.
Permit for the sign that, that got approved. They are finishing their last, maybe 100 feet of sewer, and they should be done. They've, they've been working right through the winter. And they're, once that's all settled, I, you know, they're going to pass papers, I believe, in early March, and then the new company will come in and start erecting the building soon.
Oh, great.
This, this, I would say this construction season, because they're, that's why I asked Camille about the Cottage Ave, about the sewer hookup, they're questioning about if they need to install the, the tank, if that's not coming soon, so that's, I think that's going to be, you know, that, that'll be worked on next spring.
Thank you.
All right, we need to set an April meeting, you said?
Yes, our next meeting is March 10.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
So April 14th is the second Tuesday?
Fourteenth.
April 14th, yep.
I won't be here.
No? Text?
It's my Lent. I mean, my holy week.
Oh, okay.
I'll be in church all week.
Does that work, the 14th, no, or yet?
I won't be here, but.
What we can do with the next one, what's the next, Jim?
We can do the 7th, or we can do the 21st.
7th is fine. 7th is fine with me.
7th, okay with everyone?
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Me and Bodo would just hear all of them, right? We'll just be it, right?
April 7th.
Yep, March 10th and April 7th.
Let me actually show you March in here.
You are leaving? You're leaving some of that? Hey, how are you, you're leaving from that?
All right, unless there's something else, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye, all right, great, thank you.
Forty-five minute meeting.
Hurry up, home scope. Text those raindrops.
And.